Is Vice Chair Carlson in?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Carlson, do you have a motion?
Yes. Of course, I took a screenshot so that I'd have it smoothly available. And now I've got the wrong orientation. So every time I change, I can't read it. I move that the Alamo County Public School Board go into a closed meeting is authorized by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2, 3711A of the Code of Virginia, under subsection three, for discussion and consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, and subsection eight for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the school board regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Second.
Second.
Move by Ms. Carlson, second by Ms. Dale Caro and Ms. Lee, that we go into closed session. Is there any discussion? If not, Ms. Johnston, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. O'Caro?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll go into closed session.
See you on the other side.
Okay.
Hey, everybody.
Hey, Dave.
Hey, Dave. Sorry, weren't at the closed session.
I'm sorry, Graham.
Sorry that you didn't make the 5:45 meeting.
I'm sorry, guys. I've been inundated.
Okay. It is 6:30, and I call this March 3 budget work session for the Alamo County School Board to order. Ms. Carlson, do you have a motion for us from the closed session?
I do, although let me see if I can pull it up real quick. If not, I can probably do it from memory, but sorry. Try to pull it up. All right, I move that the board certified by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only business, public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Second.
Move by Ms. Carlson, second by Ms. Lee, that we only dealt with business that had been stipulated in the first motion. In a discussion of the motion, if not, Ms. Johnston, could you please call the roll?
Mr. O'Caro?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Deroberg?
Upstate.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Do we have a motion coming out of the closed session to put into our minutes?
Yes, Chairman Page, I move that the school board direct the superintendent to initiate negotiations to acquire property A for an amount not to exceed that which has been authorized by the school board and subject to the school board's final approval.
Second.
Move by Ms. Osborne, second by Mr. Dale Caro, that we authorize Dr. Haas to proceed with negotiations for purchasing property A. Any discussion on the motion?
If not, Ms. Johnston.
Mr. O'Caro?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lawson?
Did you say my name?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it was faded.
My husband asked if I wanted dinner right when you called my name, and then I shook no to that. Yes to this vote, yes.
I would like dinner, too.
Right.
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so the motion.
I move that Ms. Carlson's husband provide us all with food. What are we having? Second.
Okay. Motion dies at the chairman's authority. That motion does. We will now have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. We always for, right now, have to read this into our minutes for each of our meetings. The minutes of this meeting should reflect that this meeting is being held electronically pursuant to Virginia State law and Alamo County ordinance because the COVID-19 pandemic makes it impractical and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. The meeting is being communicated to the public electronically through Zoom and streamed live on the Alamo County's public schools website, and public comment may be offered through the Zoom waiting room feature in accordance with the school board's protocol or by written submission. And now to introduce our board members who are present tonight, Mr. John O'Caro.
John O'Caro at large.
Ms. Katrina Carlson.
Katrina Carlson, Rio District.
Ms. Judy Lee.
Judy Lee, Rybana District.
Mr. Dave Oberg.
Dave Oberg, White On that just started a district.
All right, Ms. Ellen Osborne.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsdale District.
All right, I'm Graham Page, Samuel Miller District, and our student rep, Elizabeth Alberron. Elizabeth? You with us tonight?
Good evening.
Okay, good to see you, Elizabeth. Welcome. All right, moving to our next agenda item, public hearing on the proposed budget. And Ms. Carlson, I don't think we have any people who had signed up for public comment.
The last I heard, that was correct, Chair Page. No people for public comment.
Is that still true, Ms. Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so you can see on our agenda that we have scheduled for a break, but by consensus, is it okay to proceed with our next step? All right, thank you. All right, so now we will be ready for our budget development work session number three. This Kumazawa is here again to sort of lead us along the way with this, as she's done so well with the first two sessions. So, Ms. Kumazawa.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Good evening, school board members. My name is Maya Kumazawa, Director of Budget and Planning, and it's good to see you all again at our third work session. As a recap, the purpose of our work sessions is to unpack the draft funding request, answer your questions, and get your feedback and guidance in preparation for next week's approval of the school board's funding request. And then that will be formally presented to the Board of Supervisors during the March 14 Board of Supervisors work session. Here's our agenda for this evening. It focuses on our remaining proposals and also requested updates from you all. We again have a great group of staff who will present and answer any questions you have in their areas. We've also scheduled in a break if you choose to do so, and then at the end, we've set aside some time for a school board discussion to discuss the all three of the work sessions. Also, as a recap, each of our new proposals is guided by a logic model in the budget document. You can follow along the page numbers in the top right corner of each slide. And we have four primary components in these logic models, inputs, activities, outputs, and outcomes. Inputs and activities ensure we follow through and fully implement the proposals, and outputs and outcomes represent success measures. For the proposals presented this evening, staff will provide a summary of the outputs and outcomes, but you can read the full logic models in the budget document. And then again, similar to what we did last week, we have some information about staffing standards here. You'll hear about proposed changes to staffing standards, and for reference, you can refer to Section G of your budget book. The standards exist to foster equity across all of our schools and provide an objective lens with which, by which to provide resources to our schools. Today, we'll look at health services, some areas in general education, and counseling. So with that, I will, we will jump into our first proposal presented by Mr. Miles Nelson.
So I think the health services, I think Kevin Curse was going to cover.
I am so sorry. I'm getting my topics confused. The first proposal, thank you for the correction, will be presented by Mr. Kevin Curse. I'm sorry, Mr. Curse.
It's all right. Am I coming through?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm Kevin Curse, the Executive Director of Special Ed and Student Services, and tonight I will be giving some more information with regard to the proposed budget for health services, which is really an implementation of staffing standards for our school nurses and our health services program. So I do think it's worth noting, as you have in the past and have recognized the incredible efforts that our school nurses have provided to keep our schools', children, families, and staff safe. On the left here, I've outlined some of their traditional responsibilities. And then on the right, I want to make it clear that because of the pandemic, these are not new responsibilities that took the place of the old, they're in addition to, which really highlights the just tremendous responsibility and task that our school nurses have provided for our schools during this pandemic. But it's done a number of things. One is really highlighted, we're at a point where I think this is a very timely proposal for staffing standards for our school nurses and the need for some really directed leadership in this area. So what we're proposing is to first recognize and thank you, the school board, for establishing our current state, which is a full-time school nurse at each school building. That was huge, and I think in our evolution, we're at a place now in this proposal where we're looking at staffing standards, because the current state is also a small elementary school is staffed at the same level as a comprehensive high school with regard to a school nurse. And this proposal is a phased-in project that begins with a full-time coordinator of nursing and health services. We have learned through the pandemic, which currently we have a COVID coordinator, Eileen Gomez, that is paid through or by a federal funding associated with the pandemic. But we recognize that our previous model, where we had a full-time nurse at the school and who had additional responsibilities for leadership and some administrative duties, really needed to be addressed. We believe that having a coordinator for nursing and health services will address many of the areas that we're looking to improve and provide equity across our schools and to our children at all levels. And then specifically with regard to school nurses, we're looking to roll out these staffing standards, beginning with an additional school nurse at Albemarle High School in for this upcoming fiscal year. And then, as you could see, I broke out a long-term plan where fiscal year '24 would have additional three FTEs of school nurses to round out the staffing standards at the high school level, fiscal year '25 to round out the middle and elementary schools, according to the staffing standard, which I want to point out is based on the National Association of School Nurses that propose 750 well students per school nurse. So we use that, and I also used the enrollment projections that I have access, that we have access to that are online. And then, so fiscal year '26, there's no change. We'd have our staffing standards fully implemented. And then just a heads up, fiscal year '27, if enrollment continues as is, there may be an adjustment needed to our middle schools with an additional FTE. That's how the, that's how the staffing standard would roll out. But I did want to review for you what would be the outputs and outcomes. So on the next slide, our outputs would be, we would establish data points to collect with regard to Albemarle High School in particular, beginning in September of '22. We would then have collected those data points and analyzed them using the other high schools as a control group just to see the impact that the additional services and supports have made on Albemarle High School. That would be collected and analyzed by December of '22. And then the third output would be the compilation of best practices. We're going to start to look at procedures, practices, and recommendations as we scale up at the high schools, because this is new. Our school nurses worked solo in our schools, and to work as a team, we really want to delineate responsibilities and the most effective and efficient methodology in delivery of our health services. The outcomes would be an alignment and accomplishment of expectations with regard to documentation and health screenings across our schools, but in particular for this project at Albemarle High School. And then at Albemarle High School in particular, again, we'd be taking some job satisfaction data from our school nurses. Our belief is that, yeah, by providing additional supports based on the number of students in the building, we should see higher rates of job satisfaction. We want to retain our school nurses and have a very positive place for them to work. That is a summary of the staffing standard initiative as part of the proposed budget. Do you know if you wanted to entertain any questions now? I'm open to that.
May I ask a clarifying question, Mr. Curse? When in 2025, when we were going to put the three FTEs in, and I heard you say that this was going to be one nurse for every 750 students. Is that aimed at larger elementary schools and middle schools? Or is it aimed at a wider variety of schools so that one nurse might go to more than one school?
And? Did you back up as needed? I'm sorry. Yeah, so at this point, and I guess that's one of the procedures and processes we'd be looking at, but as a rollout to hit the staffing standard, I wasn't thinking that far ahead to think I would be piecemealing folks as much as at least recognizing those large schools that tip past 750 that would need that additional staffing. I do believe that, yeah, there are some schools that aren't a full 1,500 that we would have some utility for additional coverage teaming, especially in geographical areas. But that is part of the Plan Do Study Act that I hope to do as we scale up. Yeah, our utilization of resources, absolutely.
Thank you for that.
Absolutely, yes.
Are there any additional questions for Mr. Curse? Okay, if not, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and next, I will get it right this time. I'll introduce Ms. Debbie Collins to share the next proposal.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Collins, Deputy Superintendent. I'm sharing this evening our budget proposal regarding field trips. You may remember this proposal. It was approved in the budget for the 2021 school year, but was removed due to the uncertainties around COVID. In the past several years, the school board has focused on removing student fees. There's one fee that continues for many of our students, and it's the cost surrounding field trips. Next slide, please. For the purposes of this proposal, we have included both field trips and experiences brought into the school. So we're calling them field experiences. To date, field experiences have been left to individual grade levels in schools. With this proposal, field experiences will be developed for each grade level, two per year, and designed to touch multiple content areas over the course of a student's K-12 experience. In addition to providing all the associated costs for the experiences, this proposal seeks to provide lesson plans. These experiences will strengthen observational skills, increase knowledge and understanding by using hands-on experiences, make cross-curricular connections, and expand awareness of our communities and future career opportunities. We believe by adding these opportunities to our curriculum frameworks and our pacing guides, we will guarantee these type of learning for all our students and all of our schools. Next slide. This slide shares some of the identified outcomes and outputs for this proposal. After each experience, we will check for key understandings from students and seek feedback from all involved to enhance and make the experiences better in the future. Any questions?
Dr. Collins, I'm very glad that we're, I think you know that that's one of my, one of my great concerns is that some of our kids feel left out, and even if they get paid for a different way, they're then sort of hung out that way. And so I think this is a very important thing, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I guess I have one quick question. Will it pay for lunches and everything associated with the trip?
It would. It would pay all associated costs, so the students would not be charged any fee for those field trips.
Great. I bring that up because my mom is a teacher, and she said she sat through a very awkward field trip where it was free for all the students, but then when you got there, like, some people participated in things and others couldn't, and there was issues with lunches and so.
Thank you for bringing that up. I'll make sure that's, that we focus on that.
Other questions or observations for Ms. Collins? This is a really great proposal, though.
We're excited about it. We started on it prior to this, so it's nice to be able to pick it back up. Teachers are very excited to participate.
All right, I will move us on. So next, we're going to turn our attention to the CIP, or Capital Improvement Program, and how it intersects with our operating budget. As a reminder, the Board of Supervisors oversees the CIP with ACPS being the largest stakeholder. This slide illustrates the highest priority projects as recommended by the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee, the School Board, and the CIP Advisory Committee. These projects are directly related to expanding student capacity in our school buildings as well as the improvement of our existing school buildings. It includes a project to address high school capacity, the construction of two elementary schools and renovations at all levels. You may recall this slide as well from Dr. Haas's funding request presentation. Our teaching and learning spaces average more than 50 years in age and are so limited that we're forced to utilize more than 80 mobile classrooms or trailers at 12, or about half of our schools. We have not added a new school to our division in 20 years, and more growth is planned in the county. As an update, last week, the county executive released the recommended FY '23 budget, which includes the recommended five-year CIP. These are the projects that are proposed to be funded over the next five years. High school capacity, the construction of one elementary school, and the design of a second elementary school. In addition, a portion of renovations is proposed to be funded, about $9.4 million of the $106 million requested. Here are some other school projects that are included in the five-year CIP. I've included this slide to show you that there are some shifts proposed in the scope of the CIP, beginning in FY '23. Technology and furniture replacement will no longer be allowed in the CIP, and it has been requested that these programs be funded from our operational budget. And we will be covering details about these programs over the next few slides. I also want to look backwards for a moment. This slide is here to show you the historical capital funding in the annual adopted capital budget since FY '11. As you can see, while the full request was not met in FY '23, next year will be the highest level of proposed funding in a single year. Finally, I also want to show you the financial contributions that you, as a school board, are making to the CIP outside of the normal funding formula. During work session one, we talked about shared revenues a bit, and typically, those shared revenues are split between the county and schools through the CIP, local government operations, and ACPS operations. And that's done during the annual budget development process. During FY '21, FY '22, and proposed in FY '23, we have in our planning on making additional contributions on top of that defined formula. So next, we're going to dive into the specific technology and capital projects for a bit. And I will turn it over to Mr. Jamie Foreman.
Good evening, school board. My name is Jamie Foreman, Deputy Chief Technology Officer for the Department of Technology. Thank you for the opportunity to share information about our technology replacement program tonight. The ACPS Department of Technology operates a replacement cycle for specified technology systems and devices. Our replacement cycle has effectively been in place for a number of years and has developed such that it best supports our department's mission statement to empower all members of our learning community by providing exceptional technology solutions and support that results from collaborative decision-making and effective tell me support. Next slide, please. Our division's strategic plan reinforces the need to have an effective and robust replacement program. Strategic Plan Objective Three, provided resources in an equitable manner that transforms learning experiences and opportunities for all students. Strategy 3.3.6, ACPS will ensure each K-12 learning space, teacher and student has established baseline digital resources for effective instruction and learning. Our digital learning environment is based on the optimal functioning of complex machines and programs that require up-to-date equipment and tell me support. Digital security also requires up-to-date equipment and a data network maintained in as secure a manner as possible. Given the fact that ransomware attacks on school divisions are on the rise, the continued funding of our replacement cycle is now more critical than ever. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. To maintain our replacement program moving forward, our department's operating budget will need to cover annual replacement costs for student devices, test phones, and security cameras to align with local government's redefinition for the spending of operating versus capital funds. For next fiscal year, this will require an increase of one point million, one point eight million to our operating budget. While this requires a shift to our budgetary approach, we see this as an opportunity for the school division to better support the replacement program fiscally. To date, we've struggled to maintain our replacement program as the C I P funds we've been provided have remained constant over the past decade. The continued system act replacement of student devices, test phones and security cameras in combination with our talented, hardworking staff, and accompanying support structures will continue to allow us to make sure students, teachers, and staff have the devices and resources they need to meet the instructional and operational needs of the school division. Next slide, please. In grades, pre-K three second, we have an iPad to student ratio of one to one. In grades through two twelve, we have a laptop to student ratio of one to one. In addition to the replacement program guaranteeing that we have a safe, secure, reliable technology, uh, it also provides us an approach to achieving digital equity in our school division. To us, digital equity means we partner with our school communities to provide each student access to safe, appropriate learning experiences and resources supported by technology and essential to their success. We believe each staff member, teacher, and student should have access to the technology they need to be successful regardless of where they attend school or work. And thank you again for this opportunity, and I welcome any questions you have at this time.
Okay, I have a question, I think. What provisions or, because I think we still need them for areas in the county that don't have really good accessibility to to especially the internet. So are we making provisions in the budget for those areas?
Absolutely. We have a couple of things that we do with our budget to assist with that. We 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 partner with local government around providing and kind of coordinating Comcast internet to 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 families that live in a Comcast eligible household, um, but actually work with families to get a reduced cost internet connection there. Um, that's one option. Another one we really work on is hotspot scenarios where a family may have cellular kind of service working with that family if they don't have internet at home to to gain access to hotspot that we provide and pay for that they can use to have connectivity at home. And then lastly, I would say we're still partnering very effectively with local government to support grants and programs and things they're going after to, you know, increase broadband in our county more widely. And I I do hear about and see some success happening with that. It's it's, you know, it's going to take a little bit more time, but I'm I'm hopeful that our broadband access for families will continue to grow and be and be more affordable as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Foreman, a quick question. Good to see you. Do you have an idea as or a rough number as to the percentage of our students who now have access to the internet? It used to be that we were over ninety percent. Uh, has that number grown or has it stayed steady? Uh, do you have an idea on that?
I would, I don't have a good number off the top of my head that I would want to kind of get back to you on that. I don't know, Dr. Diggs, if you have that number. I don't, I don't have a number I feel confident just sharing right now, but would be happy to get that for you.
Good evening, I'm Christine Diggs, the Chief Technology Officer, and I think while there have been some strides made, it hasn't really moved the percentage very much. Um, if anything, maybe a percent or a percent and a half, and I wouldn't necessarily count the hotspots in that percentage because those hotspots are really um, a temporary solution just to try to provide minimal connectivity. It's really not broadband connectivity. So um, there's been some progress, but um, building out the broadband is a a long, slow process. And so some strides are being made, but we're, I would still say we're pretty close to that ninety. Maybe ninety-one percent.
Thank you, Dr. Diggs.
Sure.
And Dr. Diggs, billing out the accessibility is something that I know that the county as a whole is focusing on, right? And uh, there are certain areas of the county where it's really a problem, right?
Yes, and um, when Mr. Foreman says that we partner with um, the county, we're very encouraged that the county has established a broadband office. So there is a broadband office now solely focused on this effort, and we meet with them monthly um, and provide them quite often student data so that they know those areas that have the worst connectivity. And then we layer on top of that and let them know where we have students, and that becomes an even higher priority for them. So that's one example of how our partnership is working.
Thank you. Other questions for either Ms. Mr. Foreman or Dr. Diggs? Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, next I will introduce Ms. Rosalyn Schmidt to walk us through renovations and furniture.
Thank you, Ms. Kumazawa. I'm Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer, and so in this section, I will be speaking about investments into our current physical spaces. As Ms. Kumazawa previously mentioned, an important focus on our capital priorities is school renovations. Over time, we've also referred to this work as modernization. Whichever word you use, the purpose is to improve and upgrade existing spaces to support the learning and work environment of our students and staff. We thought the best way to show this would be through some images. So we produced a video uh, that has provides visuals of our most recent capital projects. As you watch, uh, please pay attention to the role that furniture plays as well in addition to the renovated spaces.
Admiral County Public Schools is proud of our facilities, and this video will highlight some of our recent capital projects. We'll focus on illustrating the impact of new and renovated spaces and also show some traditional spaces to compare them to. We'll start at Admiral High School. Here you'll see a locker removal project that gives you more space in the hallway and also gives an interesting space for students to gather. We're looking here at a traditional classroom at Admiral High School. You'll see traditional furniture, you'll see some more traditional spaces. And here we're looking at a renovated space at Admiral High School. You'll see flexible furniture, some additional daylighting, and you'll see a lot of different ways a teacher can configure the room. Here's a traditional space that was a science classroom. We have storage issues in the space. We can bring in some additional daylighting to give them some more light in the classroom and some spaces that aren't used as they originally were intended. Here we're looking at a renovated science room at Admiral High School. You'll see a lot of different abilities for teachers to configure the room in different spaces and for students to have more choice in their seating. See lots of light and lots of space. Well, you'll see easy access to utilities such as gas and outlets. We're at Jewett Middle School now to look at a few examples of renovated versus traditional spaces. We'll start in a traditional classroom. You'll see a traditional layout for desks, which is partially COVID-inspired. And in the new spaces, this is the tech lab that combined different classrooms into one common space. Students are able to spread out in different configurations. We have flexible furniture that can be moved into different places. Here we're at Jewett's modernized tech lab. You'll see lots of flexible configurations for the students to work with. You'll see a lot of light. There's a space where students can work in the shop area versus more of a clean space. And we have lots of technology in the space such as three D printers and laser cutters that students can experiment and learn with. Now we'll focus on some of our larger modernization projects and give you some additional details. At Red Hill, we designed to modernize a newly furnished thirteen classrooms and the media center. Work in the classrooms included updated finishes, casework, and lighting as needed from room to room. Improved transparency and connection to adjacent spaces and the outdoors was very important in this project. The furniture was updated to create a flexible and comfortable learning environment, including ergonomic seating choice, work surfaces that vary in height and size, but are all mobile and provide adequate storage. At Woodbrook Elementary, we added about forty thousand square feet. With that forty thousand square feet, we added three hundred seats, bringing the school's capacity to six hundred students. The additions included sixteen classrooms, two dedicated special ed classrooms, four smaller resource classrooms, a maker space, professional development training space, a conference room, two faculty workrooms, and toilets, offices, storage, and various support spaces. Smaller additions expanded the cafeteria and a new gym were constructed. This learning space modernization budget touched on many different school spaces. It added needed improvements to instructional spaces that included existing classrooms, libraries, and other elective and support areas that are consistent with the school board's goals and priorities. Modifications included furniture and renewal work, including updated finishes, casework, lighting, and connections to adjacent spaces. Typical modifications included classroom furniture upgrades, classroom modernization, media center modernization, cafeteria modernization, specialty classroom modernization, and additional daylighting. Western Admiral High School's Environmental Studies Academy consisted of two phases. The first phase included the Environmental Studies Academy standalone building, which includes the greenhouse. And phase two was an academy addition and science lab modernization. The addition is about ten thousand square feet and focused on expanded science facilities to accommodate the Environmental Science Academy programs. This included three labs, offices, a shared prep room with storage, and project spaces for independent and collaborative teaming. Spaces also accommodated hydro and aquatic activities and hydroponics. Seven of the existing classrooms in the building were also modernized, which included replacing casework, updating finishes and lighting, improving daylighting, and adding additional power and replacing furniture. The most recent work at Red Hill Elementary was phase two of the project. It included an addition renovations and site improvements. The project added about six thousand five hundred square feet to the building with a new gymnasium and support spaces such as physical education offices and storage. Renovations to the existing building included repurposing the previous gym into the new media center. The new media center is a creative learning space with new shelving, finishes, and collaboration spaces. Renovations to the cafeteria, toilets, hallways, and support spaces, and kitchen and serving line were also part of this project. Exterior renovations included painting and software repair. Site work included additional parking, site improvements, and outdoor learning areas. Scottsville Elementary's addition and improvements added approximately seventeen thousand five hundred square feet to the building and added improvements to the existing building and site. The additions included four additional classrooms, two smaller resource rooms, two offices, bathrooms, and a full-size gym. Improvements to the existing building included repurposing the current gym into instructional space as well as other modernizations and renovations throughout the building to improve space for both staff and students. Site improvements included outdoor learning areas and septic system enhancements. At the completion of the project, all trailers and modular classrooms will also be removed. The project adhered to lead principles and practices. As we've seen with the examples at Woodbrook, Western Admiral, Red Hill, and Scottsville, significant renovations have occurred concurrently with building expansions and additions. However, this naturally leads to somewhat unequal school facilities, and we recommend that dedicated renovation funding is needed at all levels. The last time a significant renovation and modernization budget was approved was in fiscal year eighteen. Since two thousand seventeen, the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee's highest priority recommendations have included school renovations at all levels. In a community survey administered during the summer of two thousand twenty one, respondents recommended that the following are important criteria to use in project prioritization. Upgrading athletic facilities and outdoor play spaces to foster good physical health, making sites accessible for local and community-based events, adding natural light in classrooms and making it easier to access outdoor spaces, renovating spaces to foster good mental health habits, well-being, and collaboration, and improving access for students with disabilities. The requested renovation projects represent substantive investments in our school buildings, including the implementation of recommendations of the high school master plan study. A phased multi-year approach will bring the school division's aging schools to modern standards to include improvements such as electrical infrastructure updates to accommodate technology, ensuring classrooms have natural light, improvements to adhere to the Americans with Disabilities Act, outdoor learning space updates, and reconfiguration of spaces to improve function and efficiency.
So I want to um, to thank Patrick Huddleston, Lindsay Snotty, and Sheila Hoopman for putting together that video. Again, I hope that provides a good visual for you and for our community around the impact that new and improved space has on the learning environment. I think sometimes visuals are stronger than our than our words. Um, so while we are proud of the work we have completed, there is a lot of work to still be done. Um, and so the renovation portions of the projects would be in the capital budget. But tonight, we would like to also discuss a furniture replacement program, which will be funded by the operating budget. So this draft funding request includes the establishment of a furniture replacement program. This program provides for the replacement of classroom furniture, including tables, desks, storage, seating, and specialty items. The new furniture replaces aged and out-of-date pieces, and when combined with professional development, uh, produces furniture that supports the classroom environment and functionality. So here are just some highlights about the program, uh, looking backward and then looking forward. So next slide, please. Yeah. Uh, so previously, wide-scale furniture replacement efforts were funded by the Learning Space Modernization Capital Project. But as Ms. Kumazawa mentioned, the criteria for capital projects has recently changed, and so this work no longer meets the definition for capital funding, which is not why it's now built into our operating request. Um, but similar to Mr. Foreman's comment around the technology replacement program, I think this is a positive. It gives us more control and advocacy for this work. Pre-pandemic furniture was replaced division-wide in all kindergarten and first-grade classrooms. This systematic grade-level approach provides parity amongst our facilities. And it has also been an opportunity to provide division-wide professional development to support the work. It's a plan to study act cycle, so we involve teachers in the planning and the decision-making as they choose from different packages. We install the furniture and then we gather their feedback through use of surveys and observation, and we use that uh, information to inform the next grade level. Unfortunately, this work was stalled when the pandemic began and funding was not available. So we are excited to restart this work, and if the funding is afforded in this operational budget, we will replace all second-grade classroom furniture for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And then each subsequent year, the next grade level will be replaced. We feel that furniture is a functional necessity, and this is a systematic approach to ensure we have a planned and fair replacement cycle amongst all schools. Are there any questions about the furniture replacement program?
Uh, yes, didn't we replace some furniture due to COVID and having to rearrange the classrooms?
Yeah, so we utilized stimulus money primarily for student desks. Uh, many went to the additional classrooms we added with the mobile units at the high schools in Henley, uh, but others went into existing classrooms that, um, to promote social distancing. Uh, we intentionally selected a style of desk that supports the goals of all these modernization efforts, so they reconfigure into different groups. And so our plan is, um, once we start bringing all the furniture back that's from storage, right? Include, and we will integrate those desks into some of these plans or upgrades. We have very intentionally purchased adjustable heights so they can be used at both elementary and secondary. Because these classroom packages include desks, right? But they also include storage and seating, and so we feel like it would be all complementary of it.
And do we think that this is something that the teachers and principals and people who use those rooms are are asking for? Because I have not heard anybody ask for new furniture. As a matter of fact, I've heard a lot of people complain that we spent, in years past, we spent money on furniture when they would have rather had X, Y, and Z.
Yeah, so we know there's some some history with this topic, uh, you know, but you'll see that, I'll just be transparent with it. There's no investment in beanbags, right? These are investments in I, as I said, necessities of a classroom. Um, whether we've had requests, we we were pulling back through some surveys, students talk about it. We did our budget works, uh, input sessions in the fall. It was a topic around, uh, from students around additional workspaces. Um, so the projects we have had recently are well-received. So I think it is a need.
So Rosalyn, you're envisioning this being a part of the operating budget then for the next ten years, give or take? If we're doing it by grade level and.
Yeah, so this is built in as a recurring um, replacement program, yes.
And then do you think that that would stay approximately the same? I mean, like with inflation and whatever, but um, I, would the high school levels, secondary levels be higher?
So yeah, I think this, I think we were to take this approach with elementary. I think it would look different at secondary. And I think when we get there, we can discuss how that looks like. So yes, there is, um, maybe that will take two years, right? Maybe you wouldn't be able to do it all in one year. Um, but again, we're doing that plan to study act. So I think this next action would inform future years.
Hey, Rosalyn. I'm sorry.
Good.
I I just want to say I I'm very much in favor of the new furniture.
I just want to say I'm very much in favor of the new furniture. I've sat, you know, I've sat in the old furniture, and I've sat in the new furniture, and I can tell you that for me, if I was in school today, it would make a huge difference. I mean, just being able to move your chair back and forth for someone with my particular habits, that makes a difference between my being able to pay attention and not being able to pay attention. So I appreciate everything you're doing.
And Mishmit, based on K through 12, this is basically a 13-year cycle. And the useful life of the furniture that we're putting in really fits, you know, that timeframe. Do you anticipate this being a consistent? Maybe this is what Ms. Lee was asking as well, that once we get through K through 12, will we then start it over again? Or is it anticipated that we won't have to do that for a while?
So we don't anticipate, we eventually have to replace the furniture replaced in kindergarten, right? So it does work to a replacement cycle, whether it would start immediately once we finish senior, the senior class, or you know, the, that's to be determined. And but the other opportunity this, and I'll be optimistic, is you'll get into a renovation cycle, a more robust renovation program, and then ideally you would merge furniture replacement in with your larger renovation projects. So I think there's opportunity in the future to rethink this, but this I think is a good approach to start it.
I was going to chime in and say this would be a good spot for our student rep to maybe weigh in on her experience with furniture in schools and if she sees a need or how she feels.
Yeah, I really enjoyed when we got new furniture, especially like the furniture in the room. But I feel like they also added a lot of, like, having the chairs and the tables, just everything, especially in the library because we use it a lot, the media center. I feel like it was really helpful when we were learning and having more space for creativity.
So do we have any, do we have any second graders around here that could chime in since we're talking about?
Yes, I do. Do you like the furniture at school? Yeah. They're doing multicultural night right here on the other Zoom thing.
I also, I do want to say that I really appreciate also the grade-level approach that you're using so that there is that parity across the division. I think that's a great way to go.
Other questions, comments on renovations and furniture?
I guess I'm sorry to add one more thing, but I guess I was appreciated Ellen bringing up the comment she had heard. I guess I would just second that I'd heard some things like that as well about there being furniture that we invested in that's kind of sitting in rooms or pushed aside or is actually frustrating to use, so.
I also agree with that. And with the high schoolers, we really are just in desk and chairs, so I feel like it should be more targeted to the elementary school.
But Elizabeth, you were saying the type of furniture is something that you think should be changed or what?
No, like pretty much in high school, I feel like we're usually desk and chairs. So I feel like if we were to get updated furniture, it should be more targeted to the younger students.
Okay, all right.
One last question, do we know how old the stuff is that we're replacing?
So typically, when we, when we do division-wide, right? Not every classroom is at the same state. So if the class, the furniture replacing is still in good shape, we'll repurpose it in other places of the building. And then what leaves is our oldest piece of furniture, which is often was purchased probably when the building was first built, to be honest.
And Ms. Smith, you were saying the furniture that's in storage can be brought back out and basically incorporated into with the new furniture, right?
Yeah, and so, you know, due to COVID, we had to move a lot of this furniture out, right, to allow for social distancing in our, in our classrooms. So now we should get to bring it back in. And, you know, that video was great, but you can cringe at some of the COVID arrangements, right? I think we're eager to get some of that back. Yeah, so it's coming back out of storage.
Mishmit, I've had a question, and I think I've mentioned this before, about when we are placing furniture and it's storing and reusing as to that furniture. It doesn't just go to land, where does that go?
Yeah, so the board has a policy around the disposal of surplus property, and that we are also governed by the procurement and purchasing manuals. So purchasing is not just for the, receive a good versus disposal of good. So as I mentioned, the first thing we try to do is repurpose any pieces of furniture that are still of use in other parts of the building or other buildings. If we deem that it's a piece of furniture that we have no use for but is still in good shape, we work with the purchasing office to put it up for public auction. And then if those options are exhausted and it, or it's beyond its useful life or it's damaged, then we work, then it is disposed. But all other options are vetted first.
Any other questions on this, Smith?
Okay, right now, I get not, okay.
Chair page, we're scheduled for a break if you would like to do so.
Okay, Trup, I think we can move ahead, right, without a break? Is that consensus? Okay, Ms. Kumazawa, move on.
All right, so the next portion of our presentations are here to respond to specific requests and comments that we've had from you. And the first piece will focus on differentiated staffing, as requested by you, to understand that a little bit better and the value it provides to our school division. With, I wanted to bring back our strategic plan, "Learning for All", because with differentiated staffing, we can facilitate thriving students to ensure academic and social, social, emotional development for our students while eliminating opportunity, access, and achievement gaps. It also supports respecting and championing the diversity of life experiences of our students. And then finally, getting the right resources and staffing to our schools is key for the success of our teachers and students. Here's a, an overview of our staffing standard of how we allocate classrooms, teachers, and differentiated staffing to our schools. So the base teacher allocation, which you'll see on the top right, is based on the staffing, the classroom staffing ratios that we discussed during work session one. So for an elementary school, for example, at the K-3 levels, these are staff at a ratio of 19.55 students, and grades four through five are staffed at 21.75 students. These are the proposed ratios for FY '23. In addition to the classroom teacher staffing, the 22.1, for example, the school will, in addition, get differentiated teacher staffing. And that's based on the enrollment of the number of economically disadvantaged students projected at their school. For example, at a school that has 323 economically disadvantaged students, 8.5 FTEs will be allocated for differentiated teachers to supplement the base classroom teacher staff. As you can see with this blue slope, as the enrollment increases, more FTEs are allocated at a declining rate, and it tops out at about 12 FTEs. So if, to look at this a little bit closer, we've prepared a case study that Dr. Steve Saunders will be sharing with you this evening.
Good evening. I am proud to be the principal of Agri Elementary School, and our purpose at Agri, which is shared here on this screen, is to change lives in our community and to provide equity and to eliminate achievement gaps. And those are certainly bold goals. And one of the many ways that we work towards achieving those is to use differentiated staffing. I'm grateful to have an opportunity tonight to speak with you, share some information about how we use differentiated staffing at Agri. We educate around 500 students from preschool to fifth grade. Our students come from all over the world, and they create a unique and diverse community for us. And one of the many ways that we support these students is through the hard work of our amazing staff, some of whom are provided for, for us by differentiated staffing formula. This coming school year, we will be using around eight and a half FTEs of differentiated staffing to support our students. So the staffing standards that Ms. Kumazawa was describing are based on enrollment numbers, and they don't account for specific school demographics. And so some of Agri's demographics that may not be accounted for on enrollment projections and enrollment formulas include our poverty level as well as our students who are transient coming into our school after the school starts and leaving before the end of the year. In the past, for context, outside of the pandemic, Agri has typically had a poverty level of around 75% as a school. This is important not only because there's also a causal relationship between poverty and student achievement, but also because our division, as Ms. Kumazawa just pointed out, uses poverty levels as the indicator and the way that they staff for differentiated staffing. In addition, because our students, we welcome students throughout the year. Our population changing in that way means that we are regularly adding and sometimes withdrawing students throughout the year. And our differentiated staffing model allows us to prepare for that and to be proactive. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see the projected breakdown of our classrooms from kindergarten to fifth grade for next year. At the elementary level, it's important to remember that students largely spend most of their day within their homeroom class or with that cohort of students. As principals, we generally develop both the building logistics as well as the overall staffing plan based on the number of homeroom sections that we will have. Therefore, we start first by creating staffing plans by looking at the overall number of classroom sections or homeroom sections that we'll need at each grade with the goal of creating the smallest class sizes possible. As you can see in the far left section, we're scheduled to have roughly 450 students next year in kindergarten to fifth grade. Through our regular staffing, we're provided roughly 22 classroom teachers. The numbers in sections and the class size averages are noted in the blue column. By using differentiated staffing for positions in this case, we're able to decrease the average class size by increasing the number of homeroom sections. And you can see that in the orange column on the right. In general, principals develop staffing plans, and we meet with our central office staff for their consultation, review, and approval. This allows each principal to develop plans for the unique needs of that principal's school and also provides a consistent process across the division about how we utilize our staffing allocations, including differentiated staffing. Next staff, next slide, please. This slide provides a general breakdown of how we're planning to use the eight and a half FTE of differentiated staffing for next year. First, as noted on the previous slide, we reduce class sizes by adding in four additional classroom teachers. Next, we used additional staffing to increase physical education, art, and PE and music teachers. This staffing is necessary because as you add additional classroom sections, you need additional sections of RP and music. In addition, we know that students will benefit from PE classes that are smaller, art classes that are smaller, music classes that are smaller. And finally, our students benefit from about 60 minutes of those activities each day, and we know that that impact is large because, as I said, the smaller class sizes. We then added in a second full-time counselor. Our counselors support the social, emotional, SEL needs of all of our students, even outside of a pandemic, and they're critically important not only to the well-being of our students, but also the entire school. And the staffing standards, Agri receives only one school counselor. The additional addition of another school counselor through differentiated staffing and the SEL coach position allows us to have three highly-trained adults who are able to provide both proactive and in-the-moment support to our students. We then use another staffing position to hire teaching assistants. We use our TAs in a variety of ways, sometimes to support in the homeroom, sometimes to provide academic support, and then also to help with our transient student population. So for example, we know in a given year, Agri may enroll 100 new students since the beginning of the year. This year, we've, we've positioned some of our TAs to help us with new, new students when they arrive during the year. So we knew that we were going to be receiving students who are refugees from Afghanistan, and we knew that they may be coming into grades in which we already had a little bit larger class sizes. And so we could put a teaching assistant in that class to allow either the homeroom teacher some time on the first, on the student's first day to interact with the student while the TA would cover some of the class. The TA could also help take the student on a tour of the building. The TA could be associated with the student during the day to help provide immediate support. There are many ways we could do that, and the differentiated staffing that we use with teaching assistants allows us that flexibility. And finally, we also use one staffing position to provide math intervention for our students. As a reminder, as I'm sure you know, our students participate inside of one reading program, receive reading support. That way that we don't receive any math support. And so we use differentiated staffing to provide math support for our students. I recognize as a principal that it's difficult to show quantitatively that this differentiated staffing model may work, but I am confident as a principal that it works for our students. I see it every day. I see it in the stronger relationships that our students and our teachers have because of the cost of smaller class sizes. I see it in the increased opportunities for students to experience RP and music in smaller classes. I see the increased collaboration and professionalism that exists in our school because of the strength and PLC model. I see it in ways that our two school counselors and our SEL coach meet with our students every day. I see it in the academic gains that our students are making, particularly as we're coming out of our annual mid-year review process and our ability to provide additional math support to students. And I see it in the significant decrease in discipline referrals over time for our students, which tells me that they're more engaged in class and learning. As I shared at the beginning, I know that we have admittedly bold goals for our school to change lives and to be a place that eliminates gaps and provides equity. But I also know that the best way to do that is not by focusing on large numbers, but by focusing on individual students one day at a time. And I know that differentiated staffing allows me and other principals in the county to take that vision and to make it a reality at our school every day for every student. So I appreciate the opportunity to share on our behalf of what differentiated staffing looks like at a school and to share this case study, and I welcome any questions you may have at this time.
I appreciate getting that breakdown of how you're doing that. I do appreciate seeing that. I do have a problem with saying like, oh, this is not really, it's hard to quantify because two of the things you talked about were quantities. So I do, and this might not actually be for one principal to answer, but more for the division, central office staff, about how we can show that this type of funding does make a difference. Because I haven't seen any of the goals that we've had move. We haven't been able to move toward our goals in the 20-some years that we've had this type of staffings, though. I'm just, I'm curious how we can hold ourselves accountable to those goals.
I'm not sure if that question is directed towards your new your central staff. I'm happy.
Probably more like central staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for the presentation, Steve. I really appreciate it. And thank you, Ms. Lee. What I think is that we can demonstrate using the staffing at the schools. We may not see from year to year perhaps great gains in achievement, whereas achievement is measured one time per year with one test, with an SOL test. However, all of our, all of our schools demonstrate growth for their students. However, all of our, all of our schools demonstrate growth for their students, particularly students that are behind, even with the SOLs. Ever since the Virginia, ever since Virginia introduced growth as a measure for SOL testing, we, many of our schools have maintained the very rigorous standards for accreditation by showing growth with their students. I know that when Dr. Saunders was principal at Baker Butler, the way he really began to develop the success of the school was first through growth. And then that led to eventually the Blue Ribbon Award for the school around closing achievement gaps. Much of that accomplished with differentiated staffing at the school. I believe the same thing will happen at Greer. And I believe that as we focus more on growth, which is really a measure of a student moving from where they are at the beginning of the year to the middle of the year, to the end of the year, that's where we're going to see the gains that we have. Ultimately, a student coming into school who is behind, who's had interrupted education or perhaps comes from another nation where they have not been to school at all, they have to make more rapid growth than a typical student. And so I think it's incumbent upon the division, as you, as you said, to develop a way to see that growth and make it more transparent to our community. I fully support what you said, what you suggested. The growth is there. Our students are more successful. They learn a great deal during the year. And we owe it to our teachers and our community to celebrate those successes. Right now, we are holding ourselves accountable to a static, one-time-per-year measure. We really need to focus on growth.
Well, I mean, I'm all for that. Again, we're still talking metrics. So that was the part of the presentation that I can agree with because you do need to look at metrics. It can't just be good feelings of people.
If I could jump on and say, I agree with Judy. And also in the past, while I don't disagree with using differentiated staffing, I think there needs to be more guidance about what it's used for. The presentation that we just heard sounded like a great use, but if we have determined that like it's beneficial to students in this position of an extra counselor, then that should just be what the standard is. And I'll tell you the specific incident that comes to mind. I'm pretty sure, I don't want to throw a school under a bus, but I went to a school that had differentiated staffing. They were using it for like a music teacher, an art teacher, which is fine. But I didn't know, we give a lot of flexibility. And I don't want to say that I don't like people having autonomy over their schools, but at some point, the point of this staff or this money is to help with the achievement gap and with student performance. I don't know. I just would want, I'd want almost, I hesitate to say, but almost more uniformity, if not uniformity, then at least cause it like a direct correlation between whatever decision you're making and why you're doing it and how it ties in and that to be more apparent and obvious. Because now I know a lot about what Greer is doing, but I don't necessarily know about all the other schools.
So annually, schools develop a strategic improvement plan for their school. Over time, we have become more and more centralized and consistent across the school division around what the goals are for the school based on their growth and achievement from the year before. It's highly structured. All of those are available transparently on our school division's webpage and they can be accessed from.
And Matt, I think I brought this same question up the last time with the budget cycle. Only I worded it slightly different, which was just, do you provide oversight and our counseling with the principals to help them when they're making these decisions? And I believe you had answered yes at that point. So at that, I will yield and just say, I agree with Judy and the fact that, you know, is maybe it's time to tie it to metrics or look at there's other models or something else. We've been doing it a long time.
So if I may finish, what happens next is after they've made their school improvement plans and as they work their way through the year, we have mid-year review. Right after mid-year reviews, where we begin to do the staffing process for the coming year, schools are assigned staffing as well as differentiated staffing. They develop a staffing plan that's in alignment with their school improvement goals for the coming year. They come to the central office with that plan. They meet with a team, including members of our equity staff, our deputy superintendent for instruction, personnel staff, and finance staff to ensure that the staffing plan that they've developed will align with their school improvement goals to meet the growth goals as well as the achievement goals that they have for the school. It is a shame that after the, as we made our way through the 18, 19 school year and really firmed up these procedures and became more consistent than ever, that we came into a pandemic and many principals have really been struck by the fact that they were making great progress during the 18, 19 school year and 19, 20 school year. We could see the growth. And so we have really been thrown off by the past two years of the pandemic. I am looking for next year to be a year of great growth for our students as they return. And I hope the board understands that we do not just sprinkle staffing around the school system, leave it up to the principals to do what they want with it, and then hope for the best of success. It is far more organized. It is far more resource-oriented and it's targeted toward meeting students' needs. Thank you.
And I think from, oh, good.
Oh, no, go ahead, Judy.
Well, I just, from my perspective, I'm, I'm at a trust but verify sort of standpoint here because of looking at our numbers even prior to the pandemic. So my goal at some point would be some like outside looking into how we're doing and how differentiated staffing is actually working at our division. I know Kate had asked for some information about differentiated staffing and we received it. We received some research from EAB and some information about other schools, but I'm really interested in how it's working at our schools. And again, whether tying it to free and reduced lunch or how we've been using it has actually worked and what would be the most effective way.
I would just add that Dr. Saunders did not say this, but he has the best growth scores in the division. So I think a lot of that can be tied to the differentiated staffing in the way that he uses it. So those, the growth scores that Greer has had over time is higher than the growth in any other school. So we can start, and I think that that's part of what we need to be more transparent with, is those growth scores so that we can, we can tie those to schools that get the additional staffing.
So Ms. Collins, will that be something then that we'll be able to see in reports in some type of way? So that we can see the tie between what Ms. Lee is talking about and the differentiated staffing.
We, we, we're able to do that if the state provides the numbers in the way that it shows the growth. So the schools, the principals, because you do a lot of hand scoring of those pieces, can provide that. So actually, we'll talk to Dr. McGlaughlin often about how we might be able to show that in tables and charts better.
Is there a resource out there right now that identifies how each school is using their differentiated staffing? What extra staff members they've hired and why? Can you send that to me?
Well, it is a, it is a template and every school identifies their staffing and then they, they say how it's differentiated. So we'll see how we can get you into that system.
Yeah, and I don't need, I mean, I don't need to have access to whatever central stuff. Like the slide that Mr. Saunders had where he just like kind of quickly said where, how many extra staff he gets and where he's using it, that would be helpful for each school that's using it. Because I want to see where there's variance and why he's doing, so yeah, if I get that, that'd be great.
I think there is some of that in Jamie Gilner's report that she sent us in December.
Yeah, I imagine it's out there somewhere.
Yeah, so I think it's available to all of us.
It's actually just the results of a 2019 survey. So it's, it's not, it's just like self-reported. It's not complete. So I would like that information as well.
I have a question about the intervention teachers. If they are assigned, like I think Mr. Saunders was mentioning that he has one that's assigned to math. So if they are assigned to a certain subject area, are they certified in that area ordinarily? I can speak in generalities. Sometimes they are and sometimes they're not. Obviously, the preference would be to hire someone with a math specialist endorsement. But, but that is, that is not necessarily always what happens. Sometimes, for example, we, that one position is actually at Greer and every school's different. But at our school, that's actually two 50% teachers. So we are able, actually, there's a benefit when you have two outstanding people. You can layer at the same time instead of one person throughout the day. So.
And if I could just add in there, one of the things that we look at when we are looking for intervention teachers, if they are teaching reading, we do seek to find people with a reading specialist endorsement as our primary place to look. And beyond that, obviously, we would like them to have at the elementary level, an endorsement in elementary at pre-K 6 because every teacher who has that endorsement has had specific training in literacy and mathematics.
Okay, thank you. And going to our language immersion program, are some schools using this staffing for that program?
They are not.
They're not? Okay, so are we good? Because I have some questions related to that that I would, you know, like to know. So maybe this isn't the time nor place for it, but maybe during the budget session, I hope that I can ask those questions about language immersion.
That happens to be our next topic. So I think you've just led us on.
Okay.
Are we ready to move on to that topic?
Great. So I'll welcome back Lauren McLean to talk about our foreign language in the elementary schools program.
Thanks, Maya. I thank you all for giving me the opportunity to get to talk about our foreign language elementary school program. I do want to go ahead and just distinguish that we have two world language programs that exist at our elementary schools. We have a dual-language immersion program that's at Mountain View. And then we have our foreign language elementary school program that's expanding across our division. And that's what we're going to talk about, but I'm also happy to answer questions on our immersion program. And so our foreign language elementary school program is really just a chance for us to approach language learning with our youngest students and allow them to develop basic communicative skills in the target language, while also just being exposed to and getting an enriching cultural experience at that age. And so if you look at the chart here and also in your budget book on page G19, you can see our current schools. We've included Broadus Wood because they started their research stage of implementation pre-pandemic. And then our foreign language elementary school programs or FLESS were put on hold briefly. And so they'll be moving into implementation next year. Croze, Meriwether, Lewis, Mountain View, Murray, and Woodbrook are already in implementation. And you can see here which languages they use and which stage of implementation they are in. And then if you go ahead and go to the next slide. So this is our plan for growth so that all of our elementary schools are able to implement FLESS, really starting by school year 2025, 26, and fully grown out by 2027, 2028. The next four schools who are implementing will be going into their planning year next year. And their focus is on selecting which language they want to explore in consultation and collaboration with their entire school community, including the families, and in selecting the appropriate materials that they're going to use to best foster and encourage student learning. And I know that this board likes to look at how we measure success of our FLESS program. And so in general, our students to measure world language success, we use the stamp test. And Mountain View, which is our longest-running FLESS program, has had students take that in the past. Unfortunately, for the past two years, we have not had widespread stamp implementation because the test must be taken in person. And so due to virtual learning, that was challenging. But we're excited to get our data back next year. However, our FLESS programs also focus specifically on interpersonal communication. And we leave interpretive and presentational communication into our middle school and high school. That's the same way in general, we scaffold our world language. We focus on interpersonal first in level one and then build up to interpretive and presentational. And then plus, we also focus really, when we think of world language learning standards, we look at ACTFO, the American Council on Teaching of Foreign Languages, and their five Cs. And so we focus also on the four Cs that don't relate to communication. And so we focus on also how we can integrate cultures, connections, comparisons, and communities. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Ms. McLean, I got one. On the chart, you were showing what, four schools that would be introduced in 23, 24? Have those, have those schools been determined or is it by choice? I mean, the schools get to decide when they want to enter.
I'll let Ms. Collins speak to that only because I'm new this year and I believe those four schools were predetermined before I started, but they, they are excited. I can say that.
Yes, those schools haven't been announced to their school communities yet. So it's, we didn't want to get ahead of that announcement, but they have been determined. And we are working with all schools to get this rotation together so that it's completed in a couple of years. With, with COVID and we stopped adding additional staffing, we feel like we want to speed up the process.
Okay. But they all scheduled to be completed within the next two, three years, right?
Correct.
I would like to give feedback that I remember this being a sore subject for me because it felt like we're really creating haves and have-nots depending which school you go to, you get to learn a language or not. And so I remember there being talk about speeding up the process, selecting more students, really putting, if we're going to do this, making sure it's available to all of our students as fast as possible. So I appreciate you guys working to make that happen. We've already invested a lot of money in it and I do think learning a language when you're younger is a good skill to have and good option to have for our students. So I'm glad we're making it happen quickly.
I agree. And I remember that concern too, that we were, hey, look, how quickly can we do that? So I'm glad to see it too.
I have a question, kind of a little bit piggybacking off Chair Page's question. Are there other ways outside of stamp? I don't, are there ways that are more whole school or achievement outside of the program oriented that we use to evaluate the success of a program?
I think long-term, we have some ideas specifically around looking at students who participate in FLESS and their long-term earning the seal of by literacy as high school students, as well as their continued participation in world language courses and possibly the ability through taking FLESS, continuing their studies in middle school and then high school to either take advanced coursework that can earn them, you know, college credits or also to study multiple languages. And so I think that's a long-term goal, but given that aside from Mountain View, most of the schools are still in their initial years. We just don't have the ability to collect that long-term data, which really is what we look for in world language learning.
And I appreciate that. My question is really more outside of the language component, outside of the language, whether they stay in, whether they learn it well, whether they can speak with others. Outside of that, the rest of the school, you know, whether it's changes in growth, changes in achievement, I just, I want to, my broken record or bot is how can we be accountable for the money that we spend in each of these programs?
And I don't think we've looked at that data specifically in tying it to FLESS participation in the past, but I think that's certainly something we can do.
Thank you.
I'd be interested in the demographics of who's choosing to do the program. One fear I have is that we're only catering to specific students. One fear I have is that we're only catering to specific students or families. So I spent a long time since we had the presentation on the FLESS program. I don't even know if that was part of the the discussion, but you know, like we now we have enough schools that are doing it presumably, you get some aggregated data about, you know, which families are selecting because it's optional, right? So which families are selecting to do this program and who are we serving? It's a big investment.
We can collect that, but I'll also add that in many of our schools, we're seeing it more as a and everybody is included unless they're they'd like not to be. Just because there is so much interest. So I know that some of our schools pivoted to kind of looking at which grade levels receive different levels of support to ensure that all of the students across a great level could receive that instruction.
Any other questions for Ms. McLean?
Yeah, I'm sorry to speak up then, but I'm like trying to piece that together in my head. So I guess because like I said, it's been a long time since this presentation. I know that we have the immersion program at once at Mountain View and maybe one other school. So this this staffing is more like to have a language teacher at the school that's like going into classrooms and doing a language class with each. It is not the immersion program. Are we maintaining the immersion program at any schools?
So the immersion program is being maintained at Mountain View. And but in terms of what the the foreign language teacher is doing, it's less about them going into to teach the language and more about them actually teaching and so teaching content in that language to support students in learning language and the the grade level content simultaneously.
Okay, but Ms. McLean, all of our students at the schools that don't have immersion. All of our students being exposed to to that language unless the parent is opting out.
It currently depends some on the the availability of the teacher. So it may be especially for some of our schools who are still in that growth phase, it may be isolated to specific grade levels.
Okay.
Ms. McLean, this might be a simplistic question, but is there an objective for a level of of ability to speak a language such as this, the students who go through immersion can be definitely ready for Spanish two as as an example, when they go into middle school. Is is the is there a goal? And I know this is very simplistic, but is there a goal for how prepared the students who go through FLESS will be? Assuming that they've started in kindergarten and gone all the way through, not just one year. But is there an objective for that or goal?
There is not currently, and that's largely because the it also depends on their middle school offerings. And obviously, we also let students choose. So we have students who may even, you know, learn in Spanish through FLESS and then decide to study French, for example, at the middle school level. And so it's just hard for us to do so in terms of looking at their next placement, except through using the stamp test, which is usually what we use to determine language level placement in our schools.
How do we determine what languages are going to be at what schools? And do we take into account our Almar County environment and what languages are spoken in the surrounding environment?
So I'll probably ask for some support some support on this only because this will be my first time doing it. But I do understand from having talked to some of the school leaders who have been through this process that it's really in talking to the community about what language they think would be most of interest and beneficial for their children.
Other questions or comments from Ms. McLean?
I guess I'm sitting here thinking through to my head, and I would just throw on support for Judy's comment and say, I guess I would like to see some more qualitative data or quantitative data around this as well. Because my worry is I'm thinking through it, it's like basically it's like another special kind of. And I remember there being rationales behind it like if you were having a Spanish teacher in a school that's got a lot of Spanish speakers, it gives them a time in the week where they can be an expert in something and they can be feeling like they're. So there's things that I know that you guys considered them, and I guess I just want to maybe maybe it's time at some point this year to have another presentation on on FLESS because yeah, I just want to make sure it's tied to why we're doing it and what it's tied to. And I have some questions like, you know, if you get once a week language instruction, well, I think it's really important. And I'm sure there's benefits outside of academic benefits. Are you really going to be fluent in the language? But you know, what what really is going on?
Excuse me, we can bring back the research on why this is important as young as students develop reading skills and 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 the the language development in English and how it corresponds to language development in other languages. So we'll be happy to bring this back at another agenda item.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. So for our last update that we'll present to you, I will finally introduce Mr. Miles Nelson to talk us through SEL updates.
Hey, I'm Miles Nelson. I'm the coordinator of mental health of all this for Alamo High School. So I understand that there were some questions surrounding SEO counselors. Can you move to the next slide, please? That came up during Dr. Haas's budget proposal. So I'm here tonight to highlight how the SEO counselors help enhance the school counseling program through a combined focus on mental health and social emotional learning. Next slide, please. This graphic shows the overlap of some of our school based mental health professionals. First, I'd like to talk about our school counselors. They are state licensed school counselors who focus on three core domains, academics, career and social emotional learning. Then we have due to the school board support, we have added our SEO counselors who come from a variety of backgrounds. So they have licensed professional school counselors, social workers, et cetera. So these positions were implemented to be in conjunction with our school counselors to help each school support our students' social emotional learning based on feedback from teachers, parents, community members and administrators from the pandemic. So I hope this helps clarify the distinction between our SEO counselors and our school counselors.
Are there any further questions about how they interact with each other?
Yeah, I love a Venn diagram always, but I am just curious if you can put it into a little bit more like day to day framework for me, just you know, how would a day differ for one in each group?
Yeah, absolutely. So the school counselors have a broad range of backgrounds. So for example, at the high school level, they are focused on the three domains. So you have academics, career and social emotional. So school counselors are well equipped to handle students' social emotional needs in schools. But they also have other duties. So at the high schools, they also help with course registration. They talk students through career counseling also, so helping them process and work through all the different steps of the courses that they're going through with high school in collaboration with families. And so there's a lot of different responsibilities that school counselors ever see. And so the social emotional counselor is an extra support built in to help meet the needs of all the social emotional needs that we've seen built up over the last two years. So the social emotional counselor doesn't have that three domains, they really focus in on the one domain. And so they are in conjunction as support of the school counselors. And so it's a big teaming effort at all three levels. Does that make it a little bit more clear?
Yep, thanks.
Absolutely.
Other questions from Mr. Nelson? Okay. Glad you finally got into the program, Mr. Nelson. Okay, thank you.
All right, so I want to this next section is really geared towards you all to discuss not just what you heard today, but through the first, second work sessions in addition to the actual draft funding request presentation. I have a slide here to guide that discussion. I want you to separate in your brain what the immediate points are that you would like staff to take away in order for you to be prepared to adopt a funding request a week from today. And then secondly, what are those long term items that should be considered as as we continue through the budget process? Or we look forward to next year's budget process? So we'll start with question number one. Some guiding items under there are what other information would you like in preparation for the approval of the funding request? What immediate action items do you have for staff? And also, what is one takeaway for the requests to the Board of Supervisors on March fourteen? So what is one thing that you would like to stress in that presentation that would be presented by the Chair and the Vice Chair? So we'll start with question number one and those bullet items, if you want to take a minute to think about it. And we'll just have a casual discussion so you can chime in when you would like. So we're focused on question number one first. And I'm happy to pull back slides from previous work sessions or from today if that will help you think through your thoughts.
Could you pull up the slide that you had near the beginning on the projects under capital improvement? That's being, you know, that's included.
So I split those projects onto two slides. So this first slide focuses on our capacity and renovation projects, the highest priority items. Is this the one you were looking for or the next one, which is all the other ones that are?
Might have been the previous one before. Maybe before this one minute, is there one before this one? Okay, women, is that it? Yeah, I think that's the one, right? Okay, so two and three, number two would be construction or because I thought, well, are we looking at two proposed constructions with two and three?
Yes, two new elementary schools. Those are the construction costs.
Okay, right, all right.
And so what's part of the county executive's proposed budget is funding beginning in FY twenty four, so that year would fund the design costs. And the following year would have the budget for the construction costs. For elementary school number two, there is design, the design for a second elementary school budgeted in year five of the CIP. So technically, the construction isn't part of the five year CIP, but the intention is that it would be funded in year six.
Okay, but there'd only be one actual construction within five years?
Yes.
Okay. Any answers to the first question that Ms. Gomez Alba presented? I was gonna bring your questions back.
Yes, sure, I can do that.
Okay.
Let me get to the right point in the slides.
So for me, I would say the to answer the third bullet point. The sort of obvious takeaway, I think, is, you know, we're really investing in our people. And it's been a long time coming and it's it's really important for us to do.
Judy, I'm not even kidding when that was exactly what I was thinking, investing in our people. As you were saying, I'm like, no, that's that's what I would say the takeaway is that's the majority of our budget, investing in our people. Or investing in people.
Okay, another takeaway, I think, for question number three would be the need for the supervisors to recognize the relationship between the growth in the county and our needs for new schools. Because there appears to be a pretty big gap sometimes between those two. So I think that would be another takeaway. Any other ideas or answers to any one of the three questions under media?
All right, should we move to the long term? And I think we addressed some issues or potential work sessions and future further items for discussion in the long term. Is there anything else that we might not have discussed yet that you want to put in the queue to make sure that that gets addressed? Looking towards the adopted budget in the spring, the spring or even going into the summer and fall in preparation for the next budget cycle?
Any answers?
Again, I'll just say I'm always looking for us to be able to show success or failure or that middle range of the big investments that we make. And largely as it pertains to student achievement.
To show that our money is being well spent. Yeah. No answers to long term either? We could, if anyone comes up with ideas after the meeting, we could just email you, right?
Yes, of course.
Well, the long term items are for like development of our future budget, right? Not this budget cycle, but the next one. And I think we've done a pretty good job because we established that kind of standard of checking in throughout the year versus just getting a brand new at the beginning. So hopefully we'll have chances to check in. We should have chances checking as the year goes on about what we want to see for next year's cycle. Because I don't have anything off the top of my head, but maybe in a month or two, I will.
Well, hopefully, this is the reflection of the conversations where what we've done with the budget process is that it's not just limited to these work sessions, all these topics we've been talking about throughout the year. And that's why. And that's why this is the draft funding request and not it was formerly called the superintendent's funding request. This is a. School Board A C P S funding or draft funding request. And hopefully, that's. You see that reflection of the work you've put in over the last full year.
And we.
Yeah, I guess.
We really do appreciate all that you have done, you know, to sort of draw the sessions together and. Come up with good recommendations and plans. Your work is really appreciated better for. Ms. Carlson, did I cut you off?
My kids are going to smoke a culture night. Um, I was just going to say, since this is the time for reflection, that I do appreciate this budget cycle. I think the last years one also went well. There is a switch and. It didn't feel as like surprising seeing what was going to be in there and what was what we were pursuing. And I think that means something. I think we're focusing in on key issues. Our key strategies like the initiatives. They weren't a whole, they weren't like a bunch of new ones. I remember when I first got on school board, there were like a ton of like different things to kind of take in. I like how we're fine tuned or honing in on what's important to us. And we're staying involved in the process. And I appreciate that both you and Matt and everyone who's been involved in the budget cycle, I think there's going to change. That I felt that feels positive. And maybe us not having any questions or comments might be a reflection of that in some ways because we've gotten to give a lot of input along the way.
That's probably true, Ms. Carlson, that these sessions have been so well presented until. Most of our questions might have been answered or. Addressed before.
All right, so I will just. Talk about next steps. You've seen this multiple times now, but just in case you've forgotten. We'll come back next week and. Have an action item to approve the funding request. And then the following week, the chair and vice chair will present the funding request to the Board of Supervisors. Throughout the month of April, we'll be incorporating state revenue updates and other updates we have with expenditures and keeping you updated. And then in May, we will adopt a final budget for FY twenty three. And as mentioned earlier, for the school board or for the public, if you have any questions or concerns at any time, you can email budget@k twelve alma marl.org. That concludes tonight's work session.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kuma Salva, and to your whole team. Mr. Kurtz, Ms. Collins. Ms. Schmidt. Mr. Saunders, Mr. Foreman, Ms. McLean. And did I leave? Yeah, Mr. Nelson. So thanks to the whole team for your presentation tonight. I hope I didn't leave anybody out in that group in that section. But thanks all for the presentation. Our next item, other business by either the board members or by Dr. Haas. So we do. Do we have any other business tonight?
I just want to say what everyone else has said. I just really want to thank Ms. Kuma Zawa for really the outstanding technical work and really strong leadership. That she's brought to this process since she came on board. It's really been a night and day experience in terms of how how she has shifted it. So thank you very much, Maya.
Any other business from board members? Okay, if not, our work session is adjourned. And thank you all for your participation and attendance. So good night to all.
Have a good night, all.
Good night, everybody.
All right, Dr. Haas.
Hi, good night, Mr. Page.